June 9th, 2025. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic before which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Visitors comments?
Yes, sir. I brought my comments down to... ...include it in the record. Good evening. My name is Jeffrey Smith and I live on Upper Church Street. I have attended every planning board meeting since March 25th, 2025. With the April 1st meeting... Starting with the April 1st meeting, I have the audio recordings of each meeting. I started recording due to the concerning behavior at those meetings. Those recordings are available publicly. I'm addressing issues during the 2025 zoning bylaw process raised by Select Board Member William Tinker in his April 3rd letter, which this board refused to read or include in the April 8th, 2025 meeting and meeting minutes, yet tonight places the agenda in a response to a reply for the planning board raising fairness concerns. Initially, I knew of two planning board members that disclosed conflicts of interest related to Eagle Hill School. One serves on its Board of Trustees. Another has a child attending with potential tuition benefits on March 25th and April 1st. A third member disclosed verbally that his and abutter their property value could be influenced by zoning board changes. But no written disclosure was filed with the town clerk. This is a violation of Chapter 268A. A fourth conflict was revealed by a response I received to my public information request on May 21st and involves a planning board member renting property at Eagle Hill School. In the May 27 planning board meeting, they claim no conflict asserting no Eagle Hill matter was before the board. It is improper for the planning board to self-determine conflicts without written guidance from State Ethics Commission. On April 1st, 2025, the board denied me and Mr. Tinker the chance to speak, preventing us from raising these concerns directly. As of today, the March 25th meetings are still not posted violating Chapter 30A. With four conflicts on the planning board, zoning bylaws integrity is at risk. I urge the Select Board to investigate these conflicts, refer these matters to the State Ethics Commission, and compel the planning board to post the March 25th meeting minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I speak?
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Select Board Members, Justine, and all the residents that are here and on YouTube. My name is Patricia Tinker of Church Street, and I'm here tonight as a resident and wife of Select Board Member William Tinker. I'd like to speak about an issue of public concern. The letter Bill submitted to the board on April 4th, 2025, that correspondence raised procedural concerns about how the zoning bylaw process was being handled. It asked the town to slow down, follow proper legal review, and ensure transparency for the public. It did not target Eagle Hill School in any way. In fact, it was written to protect the town and any private entity from being implicated on a technicality in a rushed or flawed process. Coming out of air. In fact, I'm not sure why they would disclose a conflict of interest to Eagle Hill in accordance to this letter. Unfortunately, the letter was never read publicly. It wasn't acknowledged at the time, and it's unavailable to the public. It was effectively suppressed until today, yet the planning board drafted a written response to it even though the public has not had access to either the original letter or the response before this meeting. I understand the only people who it was sent to read it: town clerk, town admin, and Select Board. How did the planning board even get it? It wasn't sent to them. Months later, it's on tonight's agenda, but still no copy of either has been shared in advance. This means residents are left in the dark about the content of a document that has sparked official response and controversy, a letter which was about procedure, not politics. It was about following the law, protecting the town, and making sure that any changes, no matter how small, to our zoning bylaws are done the right way in public with fairness and legal guidance. And to me, it's disheartening to see how this has been twisted and misunderstood. I hope going forward, the town will be more transparent and timely in how it handles letters from both residents and elected officials, especially when they raise concerns meant to protect the public interest. And... Thank you. That's all I have to say. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else with visitors' comments?
I have comments, but they're not about this.
We're not dealing with a particular subject at this point.
Okay. So last Tuesday, Select and Tinker and I went to Boston. And I have a few maps that might be useful, not that we need to discuss anything in detail. And I just sent an email around to board members, the Select Board, and to our other board teammates, and to some people I know in neighboring towns, encouraging us to take advantage of this window of two weeks from the time of last Tuesday's hearing on the Quabbin legislation. So the bottom line is they're still accepting comments and testimony. I call them comments. It's a little less scary. And so this is our chance for people to speak up. And I included a link in the email and some of this supporting documentation so that people should know that they're welcome to express their opinions and support this legislation. I say "support" because I think our local towns should support it because it means we possibly end up with some more funding. So right now, we need to get it out of committee. And hopefully, if it passes the committee, this joint committee on environment and natural resources, it will then move along and hopefully be taken up by the House and Senate and be voted on at some point. So that's my message. Encourage everybody to submit comments if they have the time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Paul. Mr. McKnight?
Yes, Paul McKnight. Concerns as a resident. This has nothing to do with anything we can really discuss. I have been, for lack of a better word, kind of auditing the Capitol Planning work on partially relocating our police department. And I use the word "partially" because we are partners with the Braintree. And I want, would like, the Select Board to consider more than just one location for the new department annex or place. I have dug into police sizing, and the reason why I've done that is because if we're going to invest money in a new department area, we have to know what we are building and for what. And there are some outstanding questions. One is what New Braintree would offer us, even though they're still partners. My assumption is that they will still have some kind of presence in the Braintree. I think that's important. I also think that it's important that the state police be interviewed or... Not interviewed, but ask them to present what services they may offer rural policing departments so we don't duplicate for no reason because it could possibly be costly. And I've also taken into consideration one location, which is this municipal building, and what it may need. And what I have come up with is that several things need to be addressed with this building. One, there's mold and water problems in the basement, which have to be addressed eventually, sooner probably rather than later. The stone wall behind the building is toppling. The drainage system needs to be addressed. There needs to be handicap accessibility. And I think that if there's a consideration of bringing the police department back here, spending that money would lower the cost of the new police station or the new relocation. And it's difficult for me to put numbers on that, but using the police department's proposal, 2017 proposal, which sits on that wall, I believe that the town could possibly save between $3 and possibly $4 million. I would ask the Select Board to entertain more than just the Lower Road location. And again, to entertain the state police, to see what they have to offer, and also entertain the New Braintree town to see what they may offer us as well. I can answer a few questions if somebody has them, but I'm really not here for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Do you guys want to do anything with us right now? Take it under advisement and look anywhere. I mean, you're a member of the Capitol Planning...
We need to talk about it, for sure. I like the idea of putting the money into the police station and at the same time improving this building, which is in need of some of this stuff before it rots.
Why wasn't that considered to begin with?
I think it has been.
It has been?
Yeah. I think at some point, we're going to have to, as the Select Board, present a plan or perhaps a couple of plans for the townsfolk, for the voter. Maybe we should put it on a future agenda to have a full discussion on this.
Okay. I would agree to that, yes.
I have an idea.
When would you like to discuss it?
The next Selectment's meeting. And we can invite Mr. Police. They could send a representative and answer some questions, not about this specifically. And also, Justine, to reach out to the police and tell them I do not choose... And we have one of them here.
Yeah. They have to be involved.
Yeah. Well, they have been. Right. They have been. That's why I'm saying...
Assume so, but...
Just so we know.
I could add one thing. The police, our local police, that era, 2017, produced that plan. I have not found any public input in that design at all. And that is really what concerned me. So you guys are going to do what you're going to do, but public input is most important because the police department represents the town.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
I suggest you make it a joint meeting with the Capitol Planning Committee since they've been working on this.
I think the Capitol Planning Committee can be here and we'll post it.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be a good idea. Have a joint meeting. That way, people get to see we're on the committee as well.
Okay. Sewer abatements.
Do you want me to give you a little information?
Sure.
So the 19 Church Street, Gilbertville, they had no indoor plumbing due to a town sewer failure from February 5th of this year to April 25th. That's why there's a sewer abatement for that one. The 1811 Barry Road, Wheelwright, the property's used for storage, there's no occupancy. 268 Main Street in Gilbertville, there are two businesses at one location. They sought to abate one and have been denied the other. The EDUs have to be changed in the next billing. That's why there's an abatement for that one. This 170 Peter Sham Road, Hardwick, there's no sewer at that property. And so I have all four of those for you with all the documentation. So at your... Should you approve them, they're here for signature at the end of the meeting.
What about Scott's email regarding the sewer line?
I'm sorry?
This Scott Potter's email?
About what?
He asked you for a question regarding the sewer regulations on a property in Hardwick, sewer line extension. And he asked for discretion of the board or comment from the board?
I'm sorry, I don't know what email you're referring to.
Okay. We'll put it on the next time.
Is he talking about the 170 Peter Sham Road?
I don't know exactly what he's talking about. It was a sewer line extension he was referencing in an eight-inch main. And he had a question about it.
Didn't see it. Okay. As far as the abatements go, I'd seek a motion to accept or reject them.
I'll make a motion to accept that the reasons all seem fatally. Make a motion that we accept the four sewer abatements: 170 Peter Sham Road, 268 Main Street, 19 Church Street, and 1811 Barry Road.
I'll second the motion. Further discussion? One in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Appointments? Kefarala.
Kefarala?
Kefarala. The Youth Commission. And she has a letter of interest in the packet.
Yep, you'll see her email in the packet.
I read it. Her word. I'll make a motion she be appointed to the Youth Commission.
I'll second the motion. One in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Joanne Johnson would like to be on the Barry-Hardwick Council on Aging Board.
And you'll make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Joanne Johnson, Joanne Johnson, appointed to the Barry-Hardwick Council on Aging Board.
I'll second.
One in favor?
Aye.
Discussion and vote on fiscal year 2026 Select Board meeting dates.
So I put this together for the board last year. That way, should you approve, we can get them on the website. So it's all of the meetings for FY26. You'll notice that one has a... Two have stars. That's because they fall on a holiday, so it's moved to the next day, which is a Tuesday.
It's pretty much straightforward.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve the Select Board meeting dates as listed.
I'll second.
One in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I didn't want to read everyone. Not exactly. And if you need to add one, you can add it.
I really don't want to go to 10 o'clock, Mr. Chairman.
It's a joke I was making earlier. It's not funny.
Discussion and vote to hold a special town meeting for snow and ice appropriation.
Is that the only thing that's going to be on it, or is there going to be further budget talk and stuff like that?
I had a conversation today with the town clerk, actually Mr. Rollheim, and I met today with the assessor. We also were in contact with the accountant, and that is the only thing. So we'd like to have a special town meeting in this room on June 30th at whatever time the board... 6 o'clock or whatever time the board sees fit for the snow and ice. We have approximately $155,000 over our snow and ice budget for...
I'm just looking forward, when, what day of the week is it?
It's a Monday.
It's a Monday.
Yep.
Can we be our regular?
Yeah, that's our next regular meeting.
Your next regular meeting is the 23rd. So this would be the Monday after that. Let me just verify because I could be losing it. It's May, not June.
I know. That's why I was walking around to see if I could find another one.
So your next meeting is the 23rd. This would be the Monday after that.
So it would be 30?
Yes. 15 June 30. Yep.
Let's guess I prefer 6:30.
Yeah. Yeah. Whatever time you want. I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought for a second. Oh, we have approximately $155,000 over our snow and ice budget this year. The highway department budget was able to absorb a chunk of it because they had no staff for the majority of the year. So the free cash will go to the remainder of the snow and ice. So that's why we needed a town meeting to appropriate our free cash to go to the snow and ice deficit for FY25. So that's the request tonight.
We have to post the warrant for the meeting, I think, by the 16th.
Are there articles in the interim?
It's one article and not yet. I'm just waiting for you guys to set it and okay it so we can do that one.
Make a motion?
Well, we're still discussing things.
Okay.
I have questions regarding free cash. Is it all certified and everything? I think we're there. Well, are we or are we not?
Are we?
So free cash was certified. There was an email that went out in April asking what our free cash was for the annual. That number did not turn out to be the number that was in fact true. So our new number is about $50,000 less than we thought. Therefore, with our enormous snow and ice deficit this year, all of our free cash is going to be going to our snow and ice deficit. And again, you've heard me say numerous times, I've been saying for months, I'm extremely worried because we have so many overspent accounts. Our free cash is... We're going to have a really hard time the next few years with free cash. So that's where we are.
So do we actually have a number or just negative 50,000?
We'll be putting 65,000, which is our free cash number, 65 and change. I'm sorry, I don't know the... It's 65,000. That will 100% be going to our snow and ice deficit. I think it's 65,327.
Okay. It's pretty much it.
Good.
Good.
Okay. So...
Good. So we'll proceed with that and one article on the warrant. And I think we'll have to sign it. We'll have to come in and sign it.
Okay.
I'll make sure I'll reach out to you.
Do we have an exact date? So it's June 30th at 6:30 PM?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so I'll make a motion to hold the special town meeting for snow and ice appropriation on June 30th at 6:30 PM with the free cash and all that.
I'll second.
One in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, Mr. Chair, if we can switch around the agenda for a little bit, okay? And approve meeting minutes, longer meeting minutes.
Good.
Select Board Roundtable, one. And then you want to get back to item six?
Well, it's showing going into executive session. Do you want to do that?
On item six is not executive session.
But down here at the bottom?
That's at the end of the Select Roundtable.
Okay.
So it'll be doing it twice? No. Okay. No, so that's why I'm recommending, I'm requesting that we skip item six for now.
Okay.
Thank you.
You don't want to report, just saying.
Okay. Meeting minutes? March 10th?
And March 24th.
March 24th?
Yep.
And April 8th?
Well, April 8th, if I may. I wasn't here for that meeting. Also, it's excluded from the record, my letter that I submitted to the Select Board, and that needs to be addressed for the record.
So we'll hold off on April 8th.
I don't know how you're going to approve this because it's just you who was here.
Yeah, I wasn't here.
Maybe we'll talk about it.
Okay, well, Justine makes the changes to it.
So you want your...
Well, it was part of the record. It was...
So attach her...
Yeah, the meeting. Well, I sent a letter, the one you're going to discuss later, and it was never addressed at that meeting.
Right.
So it needs to be in the record of that meeting.
So you want, just so I understand you, you want the letter attached to the meeting that?
And we can deal with March 10th and March 24th?
Yep, March 10th, March 24th. I don't know, Justine, if you have anything, any question? Oh, but you weren't here.
I wasn't here. I can't...
All right, so I'll make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes of March 10th and March 24th.
I'll second it. One in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay. Town Administrator report?
Working with the contractors to get the trees removed behind Town Hall. The security cameras were installed at Town Hall. Working with Town Council on the age building purchase and sale agreement. Field bids for FY26 have been advertised, so they are due back on the 23rd. Tended two meetings for the sewer project. Held a department head meeting where we discussed performance evaluations with department heads at year end. Met with a treasure collector, treasure consultant, and assessor. We've been meeting regularly because there's been a lot of financial discrepancies. Met with the assessor and town clerk on several times on town meeting prep and motions and warrants and everything to get Saturday out of the way and done and everything. We held our bi-weekly financial management planning meeting with the assessor, treasurer, collector, and accountant. We submitted the One Stop Grant. We started the year-end reporting for grants and earmarks to secure our funding before the end of the year. Been going over department performance valuations. Currently holding open enrollment for employees who are on the insurance. We had Maya, we had Boston Mutual out to meet with the employees. Posted the Assistant Treasure Collector position on the MMA website, Indeed, and the Town website, and we posted the wastewater treatment plant operator on the MMA website, Indeed Town website, and Mayor Association website. I met with Maya on our past frequent claims for our property and casualty. I attended a webinar on developing municipal financial policies. I met with the Board of Health Chair on issues with the public trash services. That's been an ongoing issue for the past four weeks. Senator Durant's office reached out to me today where I was able to give them, with the Board of Health's help, a list of the people that have either reached out to my office or their office, just so they have some idea of the streets and locations. Ultimately, it's not through the town, but it is still our residents, so anything that we can do, it's just really... It's just unspeakable. It's awful. Also, Melanie's here. I've been working with Harry, with Kearsarge Solar, on their, and Town Council, on the lease agreement for their solar project. It's been going, you know, it's been before the board several times, but we're working on a lease. They have a six-figure bill they have to pay, so they want to secure a lease before they make that huge payment, so that will be bringing revenue into the town. So I want to thank Harry for that.
One question. Did you receive back from the town attorney?
I'm sorry?
Did you receive anything back from the town attorney when you got the list?
They're still going through the edits. Yeah, but I will as soon as I can.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a couple of things I want to read. One of them's kind of happy, the other one... I have a couple of things I want to read, one of them's kind of Happy, the other one's not. So I'll start with Happy. St. Aloysius School dedicated their yearbook to Lieutenant Landine. So I wanted to read that because I thought it was really nice. "We dedicate this yearbook to Lieutenant Kevin Landine of the Hardwick New Braintree Police Department. Since the Sewell's inception in 2016, Lieutenant Landine has been an integral part of our community. He has taken part in building inspections, arrived at fire alarms, assisted with emergencies, addressed our students, handed out Freeze Pops on field day, provided Alice training and attended our drills. He's been present at drop-off and pickup, helping the students learn to not be afraid of police. No matter the situation, Lieutenant Landine has always been a true professional. We have gone to him for advice many occasions, and no matter what he is involved in, he always makes time for us. In 2024, Lieutenant Landine assumed a vacant seat on our school board. As a practicing Catholic with a family background in education, he always adds valuable input to our discussions and even beyond the realm of school safety. We are blessed to have come to know him for so many reasons, and we hope that he will continue to be a fixture at St. Aloysius Catholic School for many years to come." I also would like to read a letter from our police chief, Chief Ayotte. He has submitted for his retirement today. So he asked me to read this at tonight's meeting. "To the Select Board of Hardwick and New Braintree, it has been an honor and privilege to serve the Town of Hardwick and New Braintree as your police chief, but after many years of law enforcement, my journey in this profession is coming to a close. For the past few months, I've reflected on my career and realized now is the right time for me to retire. I want to thank the Boards of Select, my family and friends, fellow officers and the residents of Hardwick and New Braintree personally for entrusting and supporting me with this amazing responsibility, and I will forever be grateful for my time here. While I know I will miss many aspects of this career, I'm very excited to start the next chapter of my life outside of public safety. Please accept this letter as my notification to the Towns of Hardwick and New Braintree that I will be retiring effective August 2nd, 2025. I am committed to working with the Boards and the newly appointed police chief to ensure a smooth transition. Respectfully, James Ayotte." He also met with our treasure collector today to start that paperwork and everything that we need on the town side, so he asked that I read that tonight.
Do we, do we want a letter to accept his resignation with regret?
Sure.
Yeah.
Make a motion and make a letter to accept his retirement with regret.
With regret.
That's wishes.
The only other thing I have is I want to acknowledge Selectman Tinker and Bill Zinni for testifying at the State House last week for the Quavon bill. They took the time to go to Boston and represent the town, and I thought they should be acknowledged. And I, I read Selectman Tinker's letter that he read at the hearing, and I thought it was extremely eloquent, and he very well spoken.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. It's a long day of agreements.
Thanks, back to you. Can I make a comment?
Sure.
And I meant to say it before, but I don't know if a week's time is enough time for the Select Board to officially send a letter or a comment, you know, as a board. But Bill Tinker's letter was pretty well-written, you could maybe condense it a little bit and send it on behalf of the Board. I think the more they get from local town boards and other, you know, whether it's Select Boards or Planning Boards or Conservation Commissions, whatever, not to mention citizens, I think the more impact it has on them, I don't know.
I love Bill's letter.
You want to do that?
Yeah, absolutely.
You willing to do that? Yeah, I believe we essentially send the letter and everything.
I have it.
You could maybe condense it a little, you know, and streamline it, but I think it would make a good submission.
If that's okay with you?
Not going to cost us, I mean it's-
Are we agreeable to send it, it has a letter from the Selector?
Yeah, from the Selector, yeah. Make a motion and we send the letter signed by the Selector.
Oh, I absolutely second it.
Okay, good, thank you. Any favor?
Aye.
Awesome.
And then she can print it out, make little changes and assign.
Send it to the State House. Okay. Roundtable? What do you think?
Well, just going to thank Bill Zinni for traveling into Boston, doing all that, because-
He was good too, didn't he?
He was sharp, he was well-trusted.
Yes.
And he did excellent, so, and the State House can be very intimidating and-
Trying to make me feel better for spending an hour and a half trying to park. And I'm only lucky that they, that particular hearing out of 10 or 15 hearings wasn't heard before I came running in there sweating, after having tried four different underground parking garages with no signs saying, "Don't bother, they're full", and wasting 20 minutes underground in each one to find out every spot was taken. So I ended up at the Prudential Center and had to hike in.
I really appreciate you being there and doing that, and me not being there and doing that.
I hope it goes somewhere, I mean, it's yet to be seen. If it gets out of committee, maybe, who knows? We have enough right to comment.
It could be.
We get more money.
And filing in with that other letter that's been crafted by-
Yeah, and other people are writing letters in other towns to our teammates across town.
And there was some very good testimony from other towns as well.
Yep.
Just not enough.
Right, but they were very, very good.
There were towns missing?
I think people were faked out a little bit because they were going to have a press conference and the hearing, and the press conference part was postponed. And people mistook that to mean the whole thing was postponed. And at the last second, I heard by talking to Senator Comerford's staff that, no, the hearing's still on. That's a big deal, to schedule a hearing, it's just the press conference was postponed. So some people probably didn't realize they could Zoom, you know, and testify. But I think a lot of them will be sending in comments.
Yeah, and there are other, you know, there are other towns.
Oh, yeah. And what do you think are chances, do you have any?
I don't know, because the Mass Water Resources Authority is going to push back because they want to be able to sell their water in the east to Boston users and not send any of it out here. You know, Senator Comerford's legislation actually proposes creating a trust fund for all the Quavon towns that host the reservoir and the watershed lands, like $35 million. Not to mention increases in pilot, you know, payments and little taxes. Because a lot of towns, and Jan explained this to me, that we don't get as great a payment on the bottom lands that are submerged.
Right.
So anyway, the idea would be to increase those plus this trust fund. They're not going to want to give up money. So it's a matter of the towns out here arguing that we deserve it, we're the caretakers, the custodians, you know, that kind of thing.
The stewards.
I don't know what the chances are, but we've got to get it past the committee at least.
If it gets out of committee, that's a win. Last time it didn't get out of committee.
So even if it happens again next year, it's stronger this, because of this year.
Yeah, it's, you know, you know.
Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I have one other thing that I didn't have time to put in my report. Today, our accountant has also resigned.
Really?
Yep. So-
Effective immediately?
No, at the end of the fiscal year.
Okay.
There's been a lot that's been going on financially since, that's come to light since January, and I don't blame anyone at all for wanting to move on. I'm doing everything.
There's a lot of damage and there's a lot of, we experienced Saturday, a lot of missing information.
Right. Right?
We'll chug along.
Yep, like anything, we'll get further. Alright, so you guys going back to item six, this is where I recuse myself. As you, the Select Board, are aware, that my open meeting law complaint and my complaint submitted to the Attorney General regarding the special town meeting, let me be clear, I'm recusing myself from all discussion deliberation, decision-making on these items. My refusal is not optional, it is necessary and proper under open meeting law, the principles of good governance and basic conflict of interest protection. This is not about refusing to speak, it's about refusing to compromise the process. These matters involve me personally, and participating in any way, defensively or otherwise, would create the very appearance of impropriety that I am trying to avoid. I will not be baited into violating the ethical standards I hold others to be accountable for. If the town wishes to discuss these matters, it must do so without me, as I've already requested and stated on the record. I reserve my right to respond in the proper venue through form or process, written statements or legal filings, not any stage discussion designed to discredit or trap me. Thank you. Have a good night.
Good night. So you don't intend to stay for the executive session?
I can't, I can't, it's the only thing.
Okay.
I'll see you. Bye.
Alright, well, we're here to discuss Mr. Tinker's correspondence and response from the Planning Board. If things get noisy, I'll start being a chairman like I was taught by Mr. Zaba. Until then, if I'd like things directed at me, not a lot of cross-stuff. Sometimes it happens, I like to let it go and be free. But if I have to speak loudly, I'll do that. Does anybody want to start with this? What, do we have somebody from the Planning Board who's willing to talk about the complaint?
Sure, I would. Bill Cole, now Chair, but he wasn't at that time. I was surprised to see this on the agenda tonight, but I'm happy to explain from our perspective what, what happened. At the meeting that earlier we heard mentioned, where Mr. Tinker's letter to the Board asking that the Board not set our a date for a special town meeting to review the bylaw process, to continue the bylaw process and have it voted on by the town. That letter was not read into the record, apparently. Didn't know there was that letter that night. And then, and by the way, there was a letter that we sent about the process that same night, and it's, and sending it off to legal review, just about what that legal review should be about. Just a procedural thing. That letter didn't get, didn't get into the record. Apparently, this other letter did not either. We heard about it that night when, I think it was Mr. Smith said, "Are you going to read that letter into the record?" We didn't know what that was, but it clearly addressed concerns about the Planning Board. And for that to be shared with the Planning Board, I don't think should be any surprise. So we did receive a copy of the letter to look at, and were disappointed to see some of the language in it. Some directed toward the process that, that the Select Board and the town clerk were following in terms of setting the, the meeting.
If I could interrupt you, maybe it would be good if I read that letter.
Sure.
Thank you.
It's in your packet.
Okay, well, if there's a copy right there, I don't have to go get through the packet. I appear to be a handless clown.
I've been digging through it.
Oh, yeah, did you?
This is the letter April 3rd.
This is the one in question.
This was one sent to the Select Board and I suppose the Planning Board.
Okay, I'll read it. This is from William Tinker to the Hardwick Select Board. Subject: Statement for the Record. Request postpone April 7th vote to approve proposed zoning bylaw articles and set special town meeting. Dear Madam Chair Kelly Kemp and Vice Chair Eric Valheim, As I will be unable to attend the meeting, April 7th Select Board meeting, due to a previously scheduled travel, I respectfully request that this letter be read into the public record and entered into the official meeting minutes. I would say that the Chair that night declined to do this. I am formally requesting that the Select Board postpone any vote to approve proposed zoning bylaw articles and to set a special town meeting for April 24th, 2025. This request is based on the following serious concerns. Three of the five members of the Planning Board are now disclosed, have now disclosed conflicts of interest related to Eagle Hill School, an organization that may be directly or indirectly impacted by the proposed zoning bylaw changes. These conflicts raise legitimate questions about the independence and integrity of the Planning Board's recommendations, and whether the development of the articles has been guided by the best interests of the town as a whole. It also remains unclear whether the Planning Board has fully complied with all procedural requirements under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 5, including notice, hearing, referral obligations and final drafts, et cetera. Whether or not members of this Board personally see the connection is not the issue. The issue is that local landowners are being denied housing rights under state law while a private institution stands to benefit from restrictions on development. That is a, that is a legitimate concern worthy of full disclosure, scrutiny and independent review. At the most recent Planning Board meeting, members of the public, including myself, were denied the opportunity to speak. The conduct and tone of the meeting were deeply troubling and inconsistent with the values of open government and respectful public engagement. Additional potential conflicts of interest involving the other town officials may also exist. These matters should be reviewed by Town Council or referred to the appropriate oversight agencies before these bylaw articles move forward. Moving forward with a special town meeting under these circumstances may expose the town to future legal challenges and reputational risk. I strongly urge the Board to postpone any action related to placing these zoning bylaw articles on the warrant until these concerns can be properly reviewed and addressed. Thank you for your consideration and for entering this statement into the public record. Respectfully submitted, William Tinker, Select Board Member, Town Hardwick.
Please continue.
If I may continue a bit, and then I would like to ask you to read our reply. I won't, I won't do that, but let me say that, as I mentioned, we, we saw the letter for the first time after that. It wasn't mentioned at the meeting in question. The only way, what I, I saw that it was clearly, as I interpreted a challenge and a questioning of our independence and integrity and so forth, and the Planning Board's ability to, to do their role. I wanted to bring the letter and the issue to the attention of the other Board members. And the only way, as we know, that such matters or any matters can be discussed is in open meeting. So I brought it up in the open meeting. At, at the, at the meeting where Mr. Tinker claims that he and other members of the public, and in fact, there were just Mr. Tinker and Mr. Smith there, that was, that was it. And they, we started to talk about, I started to read that letter to the others so we could decide what, if anything, to do about it. And that raised the ire of Mr. Tinker, who stood and threatened to legal action if we were to disparage his character or something. Something related to the sort of disclaimer that you have in your agenda that was in our agenda copied for that one meeting, under Visitor Comments. This is not Visitor's Comments. So faced with that, we decided not to continue with the discussion that night. We brought it up at our next meeting, confident at that time that, that we needed to address it and to send this Select Board our response to the concerns that were raised about our integrity and our ability to function, particularly in respect to the alleged conflicts of interest and any matters that might come up regarding Eagle Hill School. In the letter, you'll see that we say the conflicts are longstanding and disclosed, and we function perfectly well when something comes up.
Can I read that?
Yeah. Yeah. So perhaps, when you're ready, if you want to read our response, I think it would speak for itself, as did the other letter.
All right. Not to cut you off, just a cutting line. Hardwick Select Board, dear Select Board members, this is from Hardwick Planning Board, Bill Cole, Harry Cumberford, Eric Fleming, Jenna Garvey, and John Samick. Dear Select Board members, the planning board would like to respond briefly to accusations made against this board by Select Board Member William Tinker in a public letter to the Select Board dated April 3rd, 2025. We would also like to assure the Select Board and the citizens of Hardwick that the planning board is fully able to continue in its efforts to fulfill its role effectively, fairly, and lawfully. Mr. Tinker noted correctly that three of five members of the current planning board have now disclosed conflicts of interest in respect to Eagle Hill School. These conflicts are longstanding and were self-disclosed by the three members, and proceedings have been and will be handled accordingly, generally by including our one associate member when needed to achieve a quorum. Mr. Tinker then claimed legitimate questions about the board's independence and integrity, and whether recent bylaw amendment articles had been guided by the best interests of the town. After discussion in open meeting on May 27th, 2025, the planning board unanimously found this claim to be unwarranted, and in fact insulting, and voted to respond with this letter. The bylaw amendments and proposals were developed over several years and have properly brought to the Select Board, and were properly brought to the Select Board, were the subject of a public hearing, went to legal review, and were scheduled by the Select Board for presentation and a vote at a special town meeting, all consistent with town bylaws and mass statutes, and all with the guidance of our town clerk. The proposals were, as you know, approved overwhelmingly by voters at the special town meeting. Furthermore, these bylaw proposals did not even directly affect Eagle Hill School. The planning board did not want to let these accusations go unanswered. I thank you for your service to our town and for your time. Respectfully, the Hardwick Planning Board. Thank you. If you could, I would like to continue.
Well, as that said, we felt it needed to be answered, in part to assure you and anybody who happened to be tuned into the matter that these were not issues of concern. And while we don't go into a lot of detail there, it's been even tonight raised that these conflicts are a problem and a violation. In the statutes, I would challenge it, they're not a violation. There's no time that something comes before the board involving Eagle Hill School, at which time the members would not recuse themselves from that matter. We don't have any, we expect, and this is part of a discussion that came up, we expect to see a site plan review application come forward, which you would well know takes a quorum of three to consider that. We have, we would need to get the quorum of three by doing as we have, involving as we have the associate member. Otherwise, it's not an issue. There's not, Eagle Hill doesn't come up like that. I myself, I'm in a butter, as are many people in this town to their properties across the street from the campus. As was discussed, yes, there's, you know, one member is a trustee at the school, one member has a child in the school, one member, I guess, at one point in the past had a family member who rented a property from a building they owned, or something like that. Anyway, it's, none of it, I'm not going to say none of it's significant. There's significant enough things that we're told, just to be on the safe side, do not sit on matters involving Eagle Hill School. And we don't, okay? Haven't had the same way that we, right now, are using the associate member to be, to fill out a quorum or a special permit application that involves a different member. In a small town, these things are going to happen, and with a big entity like Eagle Hill School, they're going to happen fairly often. We have been consistent about avoiding, you know, acting where there is any legitimate concern about conflict of interest. So we sent this letter back, and my thought would be that it would probably just go in your record, that you'd see it. I didn't know it was going to become a public event. I'm glad to see that, you know, more people know about what's going on because it's consistent with some of the tensions and actions and distractions that have been going on in town in many different committees and boards and so forth. So I think people need to know that, but that wasn't our purpose in sending the letter. So we did so, and appreciate your acknowledging it.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Yes, I had a question. We all agree that the bylaws have nothing to do with Eagle Hill. But the question I have is, since it doesn't have a conflict, why offer your conflict of interest at all? Why did it ever come into it? It was a bylaw, Bill talked about the procedure, and then there was people who said there are conflicts of interest to Eagle Hill. Why even bring it up if it has nothing to do with Eagle Hill?
May I answer that?
Sure.
Thank you. The events you're talking about happened at that March 25th meeting, and it was correctly noted, the minutes for that have not yet been approved. They will be tomorrow night, they'll be presented tomorrow night and approved then, I'm sure. And in that, you'll see what I will now tell you about the meeting of that night. We had three of us at that meeting, and we didn't need a quorum because if we weren't voting on anything that needed a quorum before, there's certainly nothing about Eagle Hill School. Into the meeting, unannounced but always welcome, came our zoning inspector, the zoning enforcement officer, the building inspector, Paul Springham. So we didn't know he was coming. We have a number of standing things we follow up with him on when we get the chance. He came in and he said, "I wanted to ask you about the building permits that I haven't yet issued for houses of Gossius Way," or the new houses, actually, on the parcel at Eagle Hill School on campus. He said it'd been by the Board of Health, been by the Conservation, but he said, as he'd said in prior meetings, he acknowledges that no zoning approval is needed for a single family residence, really anywhere that housing is allowed, but particularly not on a tax-exempt campus like Eagle Hills. So he pointed out that he thought our bylaws were perhaps lacked some clarity, these ones that have been in books a long time, where it talked about the 48.3 exemptions for nonprofits, and in our use tables whether we needed to say any, what was allowed for single-family residences and what was allowed for other uses. Definition didn't include every entity that would be, that is a 48.3 entity. So as I'm looking at his concerns, I'm saying, "Well, okay, that could be clearer. Maybe we should have the full definition in there." We look at the fact that it said, "Other uses would need special," or site plan review. Well, it didn't say, for example, "other uses other than the single-family residences," which are not in this institutional category. So we acknowledge that maybe that could be clearer, and I suggested that we put it on the list for the next bylaw review and see whether some clarity needs to be added then. That was it. And he, Springham did not ask for, as was characterized in an open meeting violation complaint that was filed right after that meeting, he did not do what was claimed in that letter, which said that he, we asked him to ask for a waiver or something like that. Well, there's no need for any waiver, that didn't happen at all. So we went on from there. The chair, Jenna, said, "We, you know, we don't have to vote, there's no vote here, but even, we couldn't vote even if we wanted to because there's, because of these, it's an Eagle Hill matter, and there's only two of us here that don't have a conflict." She was including in me then, I'll be back up one step quick, which is that I knew that the site plan review application for the dormitory would be forthcoming, and I knew that the houses, if anything had to be done on that, which didn't, would involve, I needed to know if I would be able personally to sit on that, living across the street from their campus. And even though it's on, it's different parcels on the cross from, but it's part of the campus, and they're doing buildings on other parts of the campus, I voluntarily called the Ethics Commission and said, "Would I have a conflict when these things come up, just being in a butter?" And they said, "Well, you abut it." And I said, "Well, I abut some of what they have, but not the parcel that these developments might be on." And they said, "Well, would it affect your property value?" I said, "Probably, possibly, I don't know, and I don't know which way." And I said, "Well, then you probably, probably, there's your answer, you probably just shouldn't bother to do it, just to be safe." I said, "Okay." So I disclosed then, at the point where Harry Cumberford had mentioned that we had up, we expected to see a site plan review for Eagle Hill coming in, and that's what I said, "Well, I won't be able to rule on that, to sit on that because of this conflict I've just acknowledged." That's all that was. It wasn't like there was some discovery about, "Now, there's three people, whatever." The others have been longstanding. Mine's a longstanding situation, I just clarified it, and we reiterated we would not be ruling, we would not be sitting on an Eagle Hill application. It was really that simple.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
So this is the very reason why I started recording meetings, was that exact meeting he's referring to on March 25th, because I think the characterization of that is, I disagree. The building inspector came, and the chair of the board said she would be happy to accept his recommendation. She didn't ask him for anything. She said she'd be happy to accept his recommendation that they don't have to do a site plan review. The site plan review is actually required in our bylaws, and that's where the confusion is, is our bylaws full state residential houses don't need a site plan, but then there is a bylaw that specifically pertains to nonprofits that requires a site plan. Somehow, this has been waived, and I believe that is the purview of the building inspector. I think it's interesting that Mr. Cole has mentioned his conflict again, but still, he has yet to ever file this in a written way. It's not sufficient to do it verbally, and he should have gotten that guidance from state ethics. On top of that, the other conflicts that are, I asked the town clerk, "I want all the conflicts for all the current people in government." I got one from Mr. Cumberford from 2013. In their last planning board meeting, I asked him specifically if he's still renting, and he refused to answer that. So I still don't know. I assume, because the clerk gave me that conflict of interest, it's still current, but I have no way of knowing. So the planning board currently has four conflicts of interest, not three.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Cumberford?
That's incorrect information. First of all, there's nothing from Eagle Hill School in front of the planning board. There's no application for anything. I don't have to declare anything if there's nothing in front of the planning board. Mr. Smith can do all the research he wants, but I don't have to declare that. There's nothing in front of the planning board.
Meaning that with nothing in front of the planning board, you have no conflict?
Correct. And I don't, excuse me, and I don't have a conflict anyways.
Okay. Anybody else?
To that point, if I may, this presumes that, I mean, Harry's saying you don't have to file something until something comes before you. I believe that to be the case. We're hearing that it's not. You're supposed to file something just in case something like that comes up. Let me ask you this. I mean, many of us have ownership in different businesses, have properties that live next to somebody that might apply for something on their property. Are we supposed to put in, before any application or situation comes up, we're supposed to declare anything that might come up in advance and file with the town clerk? Answer is definitely not. So, you know, when something would come up with Eagle Hill School, the person, it's up to them to recuse themselves from that matter and state the reason. That is fine. That situation has not come up.
I have more to say. At that 25th meeting, they talked extensively about Eagle Hill matters without recusing themselves. I've seen this happen in multiple meetings. Looked at the meeting agendas, there's times where Eagle Hill matters are talked about, and there's no mention of recusals in the minutes. So I don't think that it's very consistent, the way this is handled. And also, it's like, it comes up a lot, that Eagle Hill School is the biggest employer in town with the most people in town employed, so therefore, it seems rather significant to me, whenever the planning board gets together to start making bylaw changes, that the largest entity in town would be a factor that they should disclose conflicts with when they begin that process. And I know you don't like it, Eric.
Unfortunately, I can't say anything.
Why is that?
Because I don't trust you.
Well, I guess the deal is mutual.
If we start talking about Eagle Hill, you're going to wind up filing some goddamn open meeting law complaint.
Go ahead.
No, I'm not, no, forget it. As much as I would love to, okay? As much as I would love to, I'm not going to say a thing.
Mr. Cumberford?
Isn't that a letter from Mr. Tinker?
What's that, what's his name, the date again?
I forget the date, but anyways, the letter has a certain date to it. And anything subsequent?
Nothing.
Okay. In that letter, thank you, there are allegations that maybe this, maybe that could happen. But since then, I haven't seen anything from Mr. Tinker to produce any factual information concerning his concerns in that letter, any evidence of his concerns in that letter, any documentation to justify that letter. And he's suggesting in the letter then, that there'd be a legal, or investigation that have the town attorneys involved. And involved in what? There's nothing since then that has produced any of this allegation in that letter, unless I missed something. And, excuse me, when Mr. Smith came to our meeting on the 25th or whatever it was, and then he filed an open meeting violation complaint, and then Mr. Smith and Mr. Tinker came to our next meeting, they know, and they're really concerned about putting things on the agenda. However, they didn't opt to put themselves on the agenda for any discussion. So if they're, if they want to see things on the agenda, they should abide by their own rules and regulations that they're telling everybody else to.
Okay, thank you.
It says in the letter, he, excuse me, he did say in the letter that he put in April 3rd, it says, "It remains unclear whether the planning board has fully complied with all the procedural requirements under the law, Section 5, including notice, hearing, referral obligations, and final draft."
Et cetera.
Et cetera. Would that be what you're referring to?
Referring to everything in there that he is alleging, our independence, integrity, et cetera, et cetera, all the way down. Where is the proof of this? Where is the stats?
Good question. I would submit the evidence for that is in the videos and the audio of the meetings since, and the fact that they showed up to the special town meeting, and the very first thing they did was amend a document that wasn't even complete at the Select Board meeting you had where you approved the warrant. When you approved the warrant, you approved it subsequent to changes that were supposed to be recorded, and then it got to special town meeting, and they were upset because it had a definition for accessory dwelling units in there that they desperately didn't want in there at all. And the first thing they did was try and amend that first article. So these were far from complete. There were definitely procedural issues. And that's where the evidence is, Harry.
Jeff, you want any particles for now?
I really don't. I don't, in my mind right now, there isn't any clear conflict of interest because nothing really, I don't see anything here that really regards Eagle Hill School. really, I, I, I don't see anything here that really regards Eagle Hill School, which is where all the conflicts are supposed to have happened. Nothing's come before, yeah, other than mere discussions, that no decisions were made, it wasn't, they, they, no decisions were made regarding Eagle Hill School.
Is Eagle Hill School in the town?
Nothing in the zoning bylaw amendments.
There's nothing in it.
There's nothing there.
I, I agree.
So, there's no, I, I don't see, I don't see your issue right now. I really don't. I'm sorry. With all due respect, I don't see the issue.
Fair enough, Jeff. I disagree, but that's fair.
What I perceive the issue to be...
Nah, I'm all set.
Mr. Cole.
If I could, before we forget what was just mentioned by Mr. Smith, he indicated that we desperately didn't want some definition of accessory dwelling units in the article that was presented. I would call it desperate, but I would point out that what we wanted is for everything that we had worked through, that had gone through the hearing, and had been part of the hearing as required, all of those things have to happen to be in the warrant. That said, it's perfectly valid to, to change things, to make them less restrictive, not more, but to change things in the meeting process by way of amendment. We knew there were going to be a few small things, really typo kind of things, that we would need to amend at the meeting, and we, we did so. That isn't the issue that he or Mr. Tinker had with the process. What that was, is where we had originally talked about introducing uses for, definitions for accessory dwelling units, we started this over, you know, a year and a half, at least ago. We started on that, and then we're told, "But, okay, the state's coming up with their own rules about this. We want to follow that, we want to see what the, have our new definitions be consistent." We wanted to wait till the model bylaws were done, et cetera. So, we pulled everything out and, and presented nothing about accessory dwelling units in there, but there was one, when it went to legal, at the request, of course, of the Select Board, went to legal, and it came back, for some reason, I don't know why, and perhaps there was some raising of the issue by somebody, I don't know, but back in that came this helpful comment, if you will, from the attorney, saying, "You may want to know that accessory dwelling units now are required by la da da da." This was stuck in there where we were talking, where old bylaws had accessory apartments. So, okay, maybe that's helpful for them to tell us this is the case, and give us the definition of accessory dwelling units. We're like, where did this come from? Why is this even in here? And it can't be in here, because we're, not just because we're going to do it ourselves later properly, but because it didn't go through the hearing. You know, we didn't do any of that. So, we can't just stick that into the warrant then. But when the Select Board decided to approve, the warrant is presented with the legal comments included. It went to, it went to Ryan and Julie, who did the editing and so forth, and that comment was put in there without discussion or anything, or without much awareness of how that could have happened. So, there it was. And when we looked at it, when it came back from legal, and I promptly went to Justice and said, "Look, this is like, this does not, this isn't part of the warrant, and it can't go in there, we'll have to take it out by amendment." So, when we talked at meetings about what we were going to amend at the special town meeting, that was one of the biggest things. It's like, that piece has to come out. It can't be in there. We don't want it in there, it's useless in there, it, it didn't go by the hearing, it's, that would be a legitimate complaint if we had put that in. So, we took it out, that's all.
Goes to procedure, and it's the appearance of a conflict that 268A, the law demands. And to me, as a citizen, there's definitely an appearance of conflict of interest.
Thank you.
See what you want to say.
Mr. Coleman.
I will.
Mr. Chair, at the special town meeting, the town attorney was there, listening to all the discussion back and forth, and she did not raise any objection to anything what this previous discussion was about.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. Is it fair to, to ask or note possibly the nature, since we're talking about the procedures and about Mr. Tinker's concern about that, it's on the agenda that your executive session does involve a open meeting violation complaint filed by Mr. Tinker? I'm not sure who it's directed against, I don't think it's the Planning Board, but I would just point out that, that process is handled by preparation, yes, by the, by the Planning Board, but the preparation of the warrant, setting of the date, the posting is done by the Select Board and the town clerk, and was, as the attorney had pointed out, handled precisely in compliance with our, whatever, 1978 general bylaw about, about posting special town leaders.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Fleming.
I would just like to apologize for taking Lord's name in vain at this.
You're forgiven.
Thank you.
Well, there you go. He's a godly man. Yes, sir.
Can I make a little more general comment?
Sure.
I see this happen at a lot of meetings, and it happened to some extent at the recent annual town meeting, and I've, I haven't appreciated it too much, it disappoints me a lot. There are many hearings and meetings that we hold, the boards, people volunteer their time to be on these boards, and we go through a lot of effort. I heard, I hear criticism as if there's conspiracy, like people are conspiring to not do things correctly. It bothered me to hear things like, "Well, some of this gets decided when we're not really aware of it, or we don't see it happening." I've been to Planning Board meetings, I was asked to provide audiovisual support, our projector was borrowed, our screen. There was an informational meeting, there were like seven people there. That embarrasses the heck out of me, that, you know, there are more of us trying to help put on or host the meeting than people coming to ask questions and understand things. I constantly hear stuff like, "Well, you know, there's kind of like behind the scenes conspiring with the state to cut forests at Muddy Brook Wildlife Management Area, or take dams down." Nobody comes to the meetings. You can only offer the meetings, people need to be informed. It bothers me. And I'm just saying, I don't really appreciate when I hear a lot of criticism of the boards. If I don't feel like people understand how much work and effort goes in, mostly by volunteers, just want it on the record.
Thank you. I'm always ready to claim incompetence, but I don't feel correct, so, thank you. Anybody else? I'm going to wrap this up. Unless anybody has something to say that hasn't been said, I believe the plan is to go into executive session now and discuss this, just the two of us. I mean, we won't be coming back into a public meeting.
Godspeed, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Good night, guys.
Good night.
Thank you.
This is you.
Thank you.
You.
And you.
I'll thank you.
Thank you. You.
Who's going to be the moderator?
They got, they got this.
See you later.
See you.
Before I shut the door, would you mind just reading the...
Do you want me to shut this door? Wait, no.
You're just not...
Executive session...
Did you steal it?
Per MGLs, Chapter 38, Section 21A1, "To discuss complaint or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual not to resume in open session." William Tinker's open meeting law complaint.
All right. Just give me one second to make sure it's clear enough.
All right. We're going to go into executive session, roll call, vote.
I'll move to go into an exec, or, did you just make that motion? I'll say, "Yes." Aye.
Jeff, Jeff...
Jeff, aye.
Jeff, aye. Eric Lawhein, aye.